There you go.
Okay, it's seven o'clock.
I got what that was.
Call the meeting to order. Start with roll call.
The double president.
Paul Miller, present.
Kelly Coleman, father present. Okay, on to the approval of December minutes. I didn't see anything that I found wrong.
I didn't see anything I seen wrong except Luann expression my opinion.
What was wrong?
About overstepping.
What did I say wrong?
Well, you didn't say nothing wrong. But if he's going to point it out, I would have brought it, I would have put a lot more in there.
Well, it was in the meetings I record, I mean, I.
Yeah, what I, what I meant by when you overstepped your boundaries, when I called you up and told you I was going to open it again, and you told me that if I did, you'd come back over here and close it.
Yeah. But then.
I don't put everywhere.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
It would be really long.
But instead you called Kelly.
Yeah, well, no, I approved it. I mean, it's, it's okay. I just want to make sure that that was my intent last month. So you approved it? You said?
I didn't see anything wrong, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to approve it. Okay. Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we have election of officers, which we will now be doing here late.
I'm making motion that we have Paul Miller as our president for the next year, 2025, or this year, whether.
This is something we're going to do every year. We pinpointed that out. We're doing it every December, every January.
Yep.
I'll second it. I'll take it. All right, I'll second it.
Okay, call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Name. Okay, then I've got vice president.
Well, Linda, I'll maybe mostly put you vice president.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have to ask, you said at the last meeting that you thought I was doing a good job and that I should stay, so what changed between then and now?
I still think you're doing an awesome job. Yeah, there ain't nothing changed.
You're president now, so yeah, it's changed.
No, it's just we all still got the same, you pointed that last month, we all still got the same, same thing. I mean, it don't matter who's president or who's vice president.
Well, but it's the administrative stuff and researching and looking things up and saving the town money by researching so the lawyer's not called.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I was the person that backed you up back. I mean, I think you did an awesome job.
Okay, well, you said last time you thought I should stay on, so I just wondered what changed between now and then, then and now.
Now, Paul, you moved to Linda be vice president and Linda second. And you didn't vote him out.
I mean, we're doing this every year, so I think it'd be kind of cool. You know.
Okay, so we didn't vote him vice president.
Yeah, we did.
Did we? I'm sorry, what was that about?
Everybody was in favor.
Oh, okay, so that's a three to zero vote. I'm sorry, I didn't keep up there.
So I guess at this time, if Paul takes over on the meeting, is that how it goes? I guess so.
Well, there aren't really much, I mean, yeah, all you're doing is this, I mean, the president, like she said, has got some administration, but she still does too. I mean, no, everybody does it. They actually go through the steps.
No, it's the president's job to sign everything to make sure that, I mean, but I was, I'm not defending myself. It feels just, I know what has happened and that's fine. So then that means you work on the agenda with Luann, you do everything that I've done for the past year.
You're aware of that, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
And that's several times a week coming over and signing things and being on call essentially when she needs something.
Okay, you said you did a lot of research to save the calling the lawyer a lot. I'm adding up what you paid for him this past month.
Well, are we moving to the?
Seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents.
Old business now?
Well, yeah, you just follow the agenda.
Yeah. So old business, purchase the property, tax it.
Okay, and I did talk to Blake this week, and he said that they had their meeting and they moved to get, or they made a decision, they said, he said they could have put a backup for tax sale, but he decided that, or they decided to give it to us. And he said at this point their attorney had some things to do, and so he was going to have them get into contact with me, and then I said, well, what about our attorney? He goes, how about if I just have the two attorneys hook up? And I said, that would be great. And he said, I asked them to give it to you at no cost. He said, there might be a small cost, like maybe, you know, paperwork and stuff. So, and he said he did not know the timeframe and when we would get it. That depends on what the attorneys work out, but it would, you know, maybe two months or so, so we will be getting that.
I did get an estimate from Nest Tree Service that cut down the other trees for us this fall. He gave me an estimate to clean that up over there. He will haul everything away except he will not demolish the building for seven thousand dollars. And that's an awesome deal because there's ten trees there. And he said he'd take down all the brush.
That's something we can even think about.
And does he realize he cannot get any pay until?
Pardon me?
Does he realize he cannot get any pay until after?
I don't know about that, but.
Yeah, we need to make sure he understands that.
But he gave me this backup, oh, six, eight weeks ago, so by the time we get ready for it, he might have upped his price. But this is what he gave me for right now. So it depends on, you know, would we hire him and if he wants to go in with a new estimate or not.
It'd be, it'd be nice to actually keep one hand, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, which you had a couple of others also, right?
We could, we should get a couple of announcements.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty obvious if the town is going to take it over.
Do you want to keep that in the office with the?
I'll keep it.
Okay.
I mean, if the town is going to take it over, I mean, there's.
Is that a quote for the town that you're holding, Linda?
Pardon me?
That's a quote for the town that you're holding for that tree removal and stuff?
Yeah.
So she needs to hold it, not you. It's town record.
I want a copy of it then, so.
And you can get a copy of the town record, you can't just walk off.
Well, it's not, it's not a quote yet that the town's accepted, but it's not one the town's accepting.
No.
Not as good.
It's still a quote. It's a purchase order once we accept it. It's a quote right now.
Right, so, so we can't, we're going to have to actually do it again once, because right now the town don't even own the property.
Right now, it's still a town record.
Right, it's nothing. We don't even own the property. I just said, ask you.
You're going to do TMT here with town records. It's a quote from the town.
Anyway, as of right now, it's not town records.
Because I saw the rules.
No, that's not.
Anyway.
Town records, we don't own the property. So it has nothing to do with it. I shouldn't even brought it up. That's why I've been holding it this long.
It's, it'd be town record once we actually get the property and then you turn it in and then, because like you said, chances are it's probably going to be, how long is it going to be before they turn it over? Probably another month or two?
Probably a couple of months, I guess, time of paperwork and stuff.
Yeah. So this is, this is, like you said, this is back before winter's hit.
Right, and it doesn't, you know, everybody's upping their price on everything, so he'll probably have to give a new quote.
So this is going to be a next, next spring quote?
Yeah.
All right, now the Larry Tippman.
Yeah, he came at last meeting. I got permission to have him come because we needed to update our capital assets. That was per the auditor. And he was extremely helpful, very helpful. He even helped me get started on the AFR for the capital assets plan. And he said that he would, when I'm done with the AFR, he, he would look at it and go over it to make sure everything's done correctly. And his fee is only seventy-five dollars an hour. He said it'd take a couple hours.
Seventy-five an hour?
Yeah, so I would like to go ahead and have him look at it when I'm done, just to make sure I did everything correctly.
I'm, I'm all for, I mean, anything that you need to do to make sure everything's.
So you're making a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to.
I second.
For, you said two hours of seventy-five dollars an hour? I mean, if it's going to better the town and better give you the knowledge you need to actually do it.
Questions I have, I can ask him too, which is really nice.
I mean, so.
Vote on that?
I vote yes. We make a, we made a motion, so I'll.
We need to vote.
I'll, I'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Then the audit update?
We were just going to do the last meeting, so I bet we couldn't yet because we didn't have cleared, so we got a copy of the audit update.
Okay, yeah. So that's all we really need. Let me just get because we, I read it, I read it all through it.
And I think you guys got a copy of the bill for it, because I know last time you guys said we need a copy, so I want to make sure you got copies this time.
So the total bill is what Luann on that?
It was whatever, I don't have it in front of me, here I have it. There's two thousand, oh, is this the internal?
Yeah.
One was for seven thousand, state board accounts, seven hundred and five hundred and eighty-two.
That was the sewer one, I already paid that.
That was what?
The sewer one, I had paid that.
Yeah, it's the ten thousand, seven sixty-seven.
That was the general one.
Yeah.
And that will come out of our property taxes in G, so we won't get all our property taxes will come out of there.
Then the rate study for the sewer system.
I gave you, I gave you.
Yeah, you gave us all copies of that also.
I didn't know.
So that's something that we want to probably, because this is something that Tom needs actually look at also. So, because you got it on there that you wanted to prove it and sign it? It's a rate study, I mean, because it's all we wanted.
That's the ordinance for the, you mean the one that was in front of you tonight?
Yeah.
That's the ordinance, that's the new business. The rate study is.
So you got the rate study also?
I gave you notes on that from the attorney who was talking about it. We're hiring Charlie from Financial Solutions to do a rate study. And I called them and they cannot do it until our books are closed for the year. So I'm waiting on the Bank of New York bank statement yet from December. I have to reconcile that before we can close our books. And then they will yeah, he'll proceed with the rate study.
And this rate study is just a.
You have to do that.
Yeah, you got to do it to actually.
So it's a process of about three or four months before you can raise a rate, the rate.
Have you already talked to them about it, what towns, or have you actually investigated and see what towns are actually?
We talked about this last meeting, you okayed the start.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, still like similar towns.
She's done a lot more research on that.
Yeah, I remember last month we was talking, you know, like five dollars, five dollars, you know, and who knows what his studies have come up with.
Right, the studying law. Yeah.
But that, yeah, that'd be good for the people in the town to know.
Well, according to the sewer ordinance.
It's got to be a public.
The rate, well, the rate study is something that's supposed to be done yearly according to the ordinance that we have. And it says that it can be done by the clerk. And so I'm assuming once we know what we're looking at this time, after they do the rate study, that it can be looked at and we can see how it's done, so we wouldn't have to pay somebody to do it.
Well, you guys remember what it was, what it was going to be at first?
We have to hire someone.
When we first put it in.
I can imagine us doing the rate study.
Well, this time, yes, we, I think we need somebody, but.
Otherwise us.
But it says that it's basically just a review, I mean, money in, money out, and it's something that should have been looked at every year.
Okay, kind of like we kind of analyzed what the budget was and everything.
Right.
And I have transferred the funds, like from the trust Indiana for the year, so it was like twelve thousand we put in, so the sewer count is definitely looking better.
Good.
But we still need to proceed with the raising the rates.
I see the rocks that didn't.
And they moved, yeah, I have that.
Yeah, but you sent him a letter. I seen the letter.
Yeah, I sent him, yeah.
And then said he'd called and told you, or he told you that he'd moved it himself?
Yeah, because he said, then, because I told him that he would. And he acted like he was just so busy.
Yeah, he called me. And I told him that he probably ought to come to the meeting tonight, but he said he had guards, so he couldn't. But he still kind of thinks that.
He should be able to have him there.
Well, they're, they're in it right away, so they can't be there.
I tried to tell him that, you know, but he seems to think that.
Yeah, so, because after me, after I sent the letter, he called me.
I told him to call or leave a message on the answer machine.
Yeah, and I called him back and just explained, you know. Also, all, all this is, I forgot to put on here, is about Larry Hartman. Adam is going to do it, and he said he would do it for three hundred dollars. And he's probably going to do it this Friday afternoon.
Who's Adam?
From Black Creek down there.
Oh, okay.
He was going to do it maybe this weekend, because the tenth, because I had the letter, I said the tenth would be after, and it was kind of crushing it, so I called him and told him, I said, I can't pay you until if you don't get it done by, before the meeting tonight, then we'll have to wait a month to pay you. I told him that, and then again today, he called me and said, Friday's supposed to be nicer, so he's probably coming Friday. And he was okay with me waiting until after February meeting to pay him.
All right, so Larry, on his citation, or what it was, said the trash and the tall weeds. So he's getting the tall weeds also?
Well, the tall weeds are kind of dead.
Yeah.
But I mean, he's going to scoop that pile, you know. I'm, I'm.
So, so more or less.
You maybe would be there, I don't know, available Friday afternoon or not.
Yeah. Because in reality, I mean, he'd still actually be in violation of the tall weeds. I mean, no, they're six foot tall. They're, they're dead, but they're still six foot tall.
But they're right there by the trash pile, right?
Well, and them three buildings.
Oh, well. Yeah, I think he's planning on doing the three buildings.
Yeah. What I'm just saying is, well, you might want to watch it, yeah, I think, I think it'd be good when they come down and clean it up. But Larry also needs to know that he can't keep doing it, because we told him over and over and over. And it's not Larry actually doing it, it's his boy. You know, it's Larry's trash too, yeah, Larry sees it. I'm guessing he does anyway.
So what happened with his fine?
I guess it just was suspended once we took a decision to go ahead and clean up.
So this cleanup, this cleanup goes on to Hughes?
We'll pay it.
Yeah, pay it.
And then he'll have thirty days, he'll have thirty days to pay it. And if he doesn't pay it, then, I was thinking we could attach it as a lien, but that one letter.
Yeah, we can't put it as a lien.
Why not? I don't understand why we can't. The fines, we can't.
Yeah, well, anything like that too, though, you know, because it's a nuisance. We can't add nuisance to a lien.
Nuisance ordinance, if you read it, it does say we can hire someone to obey it.
Yeah.
And then if they don't pay that, we can file a lien, so.
Yeah, once they're in habitual.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by habitual.
Says the third time, after the third time, then they turn in habitual, and then we can actually file a lien after we pay to have some.
File a lien on what?
On their, their fines.
No, can't ever file a lien on their fines. Read it again, or else, I'll tell you what, why don't you find it and bring it to me?
I will, I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same way it's been for years and years and years, and we didn't change it.
Well, just show me where it says that.
I will. All right, so good, and he's coming down probably by February?
Probably Friday afternoon.
Okay, this Friday.
As you said, it's supposed to be warm.
He also mentioned having the sheriff on standby.
Might be a good idea.
But I, but I mentioned that to Adam today, and I said, well, if you don't know exactly what time he comes, and I can't, I can't really call the sheriff because.
Exactly. Yeah, but he's got a letter saying that we're going to do it.
Right.
Is that some return receipt?
And we're in our, we're, I mean, we're lawfully doing the right thing, I mean, you know, okay.
Most of the letters I send like that, I need to get back. Unfortunately, people don't sign them.
Okay, so the new business, we want a new business, it's a, that ordinance for residents to pay the damage. I seen, you got that written out, or the lawyer does. Man, we can't really do much about this tonight.
You have to present it tonight and then the next time.
Yeah. So then in the meantime, maybe we get a hold of Tom, you know, give it, before next month, give it to him. So he can actually get what I can.
I have a problem for him. But you probably need to explain to the public tonight what it is, so then it can be.
It's pretty self-explanatory. It's saying it's, it's actually, if they, the town can actually prove, or the maintenance or superintendent of the town or whatever can prove that you're the one causing the problem in your sewer system, and that they can actually lead it back to your property that you're getting fined for. You know, and it goes all the way down to the, to it where you know, it's, if it happens more than a couple of times a year, that we can actually just hand it over to you and you're taking care of it. You know, so whatever, whatever it costs for you, you know, if something happens to them instead of the town working on it, it's, it's your baby.
If, if we can prove that it came from your resident, right?
Yes. You know, so yeah, this is something that we probably need to too bad we couldn't send something like this out.
What is the criteria for proof? What are the criteria for proof it came from somebody?
So.
I mean, in a court, you can't just say
well.
It came from this house.
Well, exactly, we got to prove it, we got to prove it by a supervisor or their mate, or maintenance guy, which is Tom. You know, if he can pinpoint it and prove without no doubt that it came from, you know, this, this house. You know, and again, this actually tells you, if somebody reads it and reads it closely, it tells you it's not more or less a guarantee of pay. Because again, all this really is a scare tactic.
No, I get, I'm just going by the one jerk who decides to kid in a couple of miles and files a lawsuit against you.
Exactly.
A lawsuit, not even spending a dent in grand, but for your lawyer. Because he looks like he's been hosed.
It's, and, and again, I can see that happening. You know, so it's a, and I can't see, it's a legal battle, battle for us inside the city corporation to actually say, okay, we're done, we're done with your pump, that's yours.
Well, currently, I'm wrong, you're probably a handful of places in town where you could point to and say it had to come from that house.
Yeah, yeah.
Pick us down that side.
You couldn't tell, I could have had a small amount of mine, doesn't go.
Exactly, exactly. So, so there's only a few places, yeah, and, and that's, people's going to complain about that too, like pinpointing them out. You know, but there is two places in town that's really bad.
And who can say that wants to file a lawsuit or?
Exactly. I, I think what we should do, you know, is, is write him a letter, like, you know, we, we know it's coming from your house, or, you know, hey, there's, it's leading to your house. Or, or just, just say, hey, you know, it's, this is what we found in your system.
Is there any guarantee or warranty we have that, say, Bob spent, I don't know who, I don't want to know.
There's, there's nothing.
Your pump gets fried and we slow off it.
There's nothing. There's nothing to prove that somebody, you know, done something.
We know it came from, but we slow off real quick.
Yeah. Exactly, I know what you mean, now, it's, it's.
You get your point across. Quit breaking your crap.
And the attorney mentioned in the letter too about her sending it, like you mentioned last time, sending a note to them to let them know you know, this is an issue, and this is what's going to happen. An ordinance is being passed.
Yeah. And that owner's letter, it also, he also stated that to take somebody to court, it would be very, very hard, and the judge may not rule in our favor either.
Right.
And then we'd just be out on a bunch of money, you know, so.
Well, but then they would too.
Is there any possibility we just the town sign those pump holders, that would make them responsible?
Well.
Just give it to them?
Inside the corporation, I mean, he says we can do it. But inside the corporation, I don't know how we could actually do it unless we did every single pump. You know, because again, the pinpointing, but then again, I don't know, I mean, uh.
Well, I think now, like, when you have a new hookup, and especially if they're outside the town.
Yeah, well, if it's outside town, it's a different story.
They're told it's your responsibility, but since they've already been grandfathered in, I don't think that we could.
Yeah.
I mean, because for them to be told, okay, you're going to have to pay the $700 to replace the pump because it's old, I don't think that's going to fly very well, you know? Yeah, I just, I don't know.
As far as, as far as, I'd still send it to Tom. I still think, if nothing else, this could be a good scare tactic. You know, to actually make everybody aware, if some, if some people even reads it.
I have a copy of the ordinance for Tom.
You know, so.
Well, and I'll, I'll state in that insert, the sewer bill. I'm not going to send this whole thing to them, and they're not going to read it.
Yeah, yeah, they're not going to read it.
Um, I will state that in that letter, put in the next sewer bill.
But if you remember right, I mean, outside of town, on this side of the tracks, this happened several times in the last probably fifteen years. I mean, full.
Last year.
Full-fledged towels and everything else. And, yeah, I know there was one year that it cost like eighteen thousand dollars for one house.
Wow.
To keep replacing pumps.
Well, as Steve said, we've always charged the resident, but we just couldn't find any thing to back it up, so that's why we're doing this ordinance.
Yeah. Steve said we've always charged residents?
That's what he said. I called him.
Yeah, well, hey.
I don't remember us having that many problems with it. I don't remember us having that many problems with it, you know, until recently.
I kind of remember, though, at other meetings when Steve was in charge, he would look at somebody and say, fine, why?
Yeah, it was across the tracks. It was always the same house. You know, just, I mean, I was raising half a dozen kids down there. But yeah. So this is new business.
Fire protection.
No, I would say we need to make a motion on this, right, or this is...
No.
Because we did it last month.
We need to present it now, next meeting we'll pass it.
Okay.
Because you have to present it in one meeting and then pass it. So study it well between them.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure you agree with that and...
I mean, it's got a good, a lot of good stuff in it. You know, and not only that, he pin, he pinpoints out some of the other ones, you know, like in six four and six five. You know, section six four and six five, one won't, could possibly happen.
Kelly, I, or Kelly, huh, Lillian, I do have a question on the, these, where you filed the lien on the sewer. How do you come up with different amount of money on different people?
Because sometimes they pay different amounts.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and the, like, these are...
I just wondered, because there was one for three thirty-five sixteen and sixteen cents.
I know. They're weird amounts, yeah, because just, sometimes they just make a partial payment or, yeah. And of course, the computer doesn't lie, so whatever, just look, just in sets.
So, all right, move on to the fire protection agreement.
Okay, so we do this every year. This basically is saying that we're gonna be paying them...
Twelve thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars a year. An additional four thousand is being committed to purchase clothing. Requirements are that they will pay everything else. And the payments are made in January, or no, the payments are made in June and December. And this contract is good for a year, so I need to have the council member sign here, and then I will have, go over and have Lynn sign where it says.
Did we, all right, so the contract is renewable every year for four years?
No, one year.
Okay, for just one year.
Yeah.
All right, so who is, who is the chief that came down here? Remember, and talked to us to get...
Oh, that was Manier.
Miss Manier.
Yeah, Scott Manier. But I don't think he even is the chief, I mean, I don't think, Lynn is the chief.
Okay.
Scott is with the...
Yeah, okay, so he, yeah.
So, and again, I agree helping them out a lot, as much as we can anyway, without putting...
Well, we have to do that, because we've agreed to do it.
I know, we agreed to it now. But they wouldn't even let us use their water down there. That's pretty bad.
Yeah, when, when he was gonna power wash the mold off of the building. Yeah.
But, but that's not the reason that we...
I, I know, I know, but I just wanted to bring it up to them, you know, like, hey, because we're helping for as small as we are, that's, that's a pretty wealthy donation.
Yes, it is.
Well, it's, it's called a fire protection agreement, so I think, you know...
Yeah, every town's doing it, and he, he ended up getting a lot of towns doing it for him.
Yeah, and that equipment, four thousand that we do, and that's just for four years, right? Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was.
The look and say. What else, I signed in the wrong place. We have to redo this.
Why did that...
Yeah.
All right, any comments from the public?
No complaints again? Oh, I did want to say, um, Adam.
Howard.
He did move that deed request.
I saw that, yeah.
I didn't notice that.
I know Dale had said one time that he told him he was just gonna put it in the garage, that was before we sent him the letter, so that's very...
Didn't the piss ever get fixed at the park?
Marvin tried to straighten it, it's still...
We got a piece in here.
Yeah, it's still got a little place, it goes like that, but it's a little better than it was.
I can take this piece down there and replace it. All right, signing the claims?
Well, we have to adjourn first, don't we?
Well...
That's not what you got on here.
I mean, we always did adjourn first, then sign the claims.
Why didn't we...
But then we changed it, but, but I'd like to go back to it, yeah. I like to adjourn, do sign the claims.
What is it, we have to prove, make note that you're signing it, is that how that goes?
That we make a motion? That everybody agreed with what we would be signing, that's what we were doing now.
Yeah.
And then signing it after we adjourned.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to make a motion to sign it after we adjourn?
We'll make a motion that you agree with the, what you're, with the list that I gave you.
All right, so I do make a motion that I agree with the, the list that was presented to us by you on the bills that we're gonna be signing.
About them? Three zero?
All right.
And then I can make motion to adjourn, right? It's a progress.
I like it better, I like it better that way. All right, so then I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
And that way there, we're done. Thirty-five minutes, I like it. It'll be an hour probably. Forty-five, fifty minutes.
Are you busy today, Liz? Liz, are you busy today?
Um, I'm busy now. I'm gonna stay a little later because I got a chopper coming in. She works in Port Wayne, she can't get there before that. Yeah, I'm with the little girl, I had, well, she called me on Friday when we got my doctor's appointment, so I couldn't go in on Friday. So she ended up wanting in, well, they...
Sort of do, Lillian, you are a few file, like that training, in the office.
And so my husband, so she said she had COVID and she left. And it is just been a mess. And then she texted me this morning and said, Mike, you look like Matt, can you go in today? I worked long. She said, oh, it's a right, you look good today, I said, okay.
You guys have a good rest of the week.
Bye, it's me too, yeah, bye.
Yeah, I bet they're, these guys probably like it up this way too, adjourn them, let them go. Yeah.
That's what I thought, so I need to maybe change that on the agenda? How do I handle that?
Well, you know, we started out...
Maybe approve it.
Approving for the year that we would do it while they were here. Kelly said she looked it up and they were supposed to...
Right.
They were still here. Then later on, Kelly decided we didn't need to do that, so we changed it back.
Well, people just weren't listening when you...
Well, they shouldn't have to set through that anyway.
No, but it needs, the reason I had to print out the list of what we were approving.
Yeah, someone wants to know.
Well, so it was on record that we were signing and approving, so...
Yeah, to show them, and let them know.
So it says in the minutes that we would be signing and approving.